Thank you. I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:05 PM. We'll take a moment of silence to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's coordinator call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scavano?
Here.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo? With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to thank the gentlemen in the back room, Rod Waddell and Connor Childers, who are working behind the scenes to produce our broadcast on Channel 20 on Comcast. So, thank you guys. I don't believe we have any public comments tonight, so I don't need to read through that. But I'll ask at this time, are there any board member comments? Seeing none?
Actually, you should see one.
Okay, I do. Okay, I see it now.
In Jaime's absence, I will pick up the persistence ball and encourage any parents or guardians who are having questions about how well their students are keeping up with their classes, that they should be contacting their students' teachers or contacting the principals. And let's make sure that everybody is working together to make sure these kids are hitting their attainment. I also want to recognize or pass on my condolences once again. We had a student at East who died about a week and a half ago, Daquavion Jones. This is the fourth one this year. Each just incredibly sad, and I just feel the loss of their youth, their potential, and all the gifts that they certainly could have brought to the district and the community.
Thank you. Any others? I would just like to remind everyone that tomorrow is the Academy Expo that will be held at the indoor sports center, I believe, and starts, I think, at nine in the morning. So if you get a chance, take a tour. I'm sure Dr. Vosberg will be out there at some point. So, always an exciting time, and we want to thank all the people that threw alignment Rockford and the volunteers that help out with that expo, because it's a big job to pull it off, and it's always very well received by our freshman students. So, just a reminder about that. We are now then at the consent portion of our agenda, including the following: the meeting minutes of October 9, 2018, payroll report, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request log, contracts under $10,000, and travel; the bid recommendation for the exclusive pouring rights rebid; the Don Johnston Snap and Read subscription; the financial results for the first quarter of fiscal year '19, ending on September 30, 2018; the monthly investment report for September of 2018; the new school construction change order logs; and RPS managed work change order logs. Is there a motion and a second to approve the following? I probably should ask if there's any, no, no. Yeah, is there? Let's do the motion first.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that the board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Segal?
8A.
8A, okay. Mr. Dixon?
9C.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
7A.
Okay. Okay.
6F.
6F, okay. Okay, I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
One today, yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, now I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of item 6F, which was the contracts under $10,000.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Dixon?
Yes, I had a, I guess, the remedy for renewal in lives. I guess the cost is, what, $4,000? I'm sorry. My question was simple. Is it once a month? Is it weekly, yearly, that this takes place?
No. Actually, this was one session delivered at Teacher Institute Day that focused on domestic violence and trauma-informed practices.
So it's a one-time thing?
It was a one-time thing, correct.
So I was wondering, because I didn't see it. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? For remedies, okay. All right. Yeah, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 6F, the contracts under $10,000.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
All right, and I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of item 7A, which is the bid recommendation for exclusive pouring rights.
So moved.
Mr. Connor moves?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussions on this item? Mr. Dixon, or Mr. Connor?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Connor.
On this one, I think, I'm not asking for it tonight, and I know it said that there would result in a loss of revenue for some of the schools. It would be nice if we had just, like, rough numbers on some of these. You know, how much would it be by the schools, either individually or total? What would it mean to the middle schools? I think all I want to do on this one, because I know why it showed as a percentage, it's just, and I should have thought to send a note in advance, I didn't, but just kind of a dollar impact on this one. I think the other thing is, if somebody could just, because I don't know if the public knows about this one, maybe state in a couple sentences what's driving this, this change? Yeah, this is all 7A.
Good evening. When we initially put this RFP out, it had three components. One was the full-service vending, the other was product-for-booster club concession stands, and the third was for nutrition service cafeteria line sales. Upon evaluating the responses we got, we determined that we had better options outside of the ones that were in the RFP as far as boosters getting their own product and having the boosters provide it, and provide our own coolers, and nutrition services buying a different product from another vendor. So we awarded only the vending. Is that the part you're referring to, or anything more specifically?
No, it was, other than maybe some real numbers would be what drove the decision.
To award the vending or to not?
So, the fact is that we've now changed the basis of this, and we now have a percent on this, and you just said it, there were three pieces to it.
That percentage has always been the vending component.
Yeah.
There just aren't the other purchasing components that go along with it going forward, since we're not doing those two aspects of it. The commission rate did go up from 25% to 30% over our prior contract, so we did see an improvement there.
Okay. Mr. Dixon?
You partly answered the question that I wanted to know, is what is the arrangement that we have with the pop machines now? Because right now, we don't have a contract, but what was the arrangements previously?
We're making 25% on their sales right now.
Okay. And so now we're going to 30?
Correct.
Makes sense?
Okay. Mr. Rollins?
I think Mr. Connor's question was the same question I had, which is, and I don't know if you can answer this off the top of your head, I should have sent an email in as well. How much are we making? Like, how much revenue would we lose if we didn't do this?
I can tell you.
Okay.
Just happened to have asked, and Michelle Yar happened to have told me. So, the commission for all high schools for last year was $14,921. I didn't get it broken down by school. And the commission rate is based on the sale price of the bottle at $1.75 per. And I can also share how the schools have spent the money if anyone's interested. No?
No.
Sure.
Student activities, a sunshine fund, but these are not restricted funds, but the expenditures are monitored through InTouch.
And just to add one thing, thank you, is the principals, it's under their discretion how to spend this money. So this is our Fund 99 money primarily. So they really, it goes through the school purchase order, the principal has to sign off on it. I didn't include the elementary to Mr. Segal, but it's very, they're very small dollar amounts. I looked at a couple of schools, and I can provide that information, but it was, for one elementary, it was $300 for the entire fiscal year of 2017-18. So it's, they're very small dollars, which is why it was beneficial to exclude those, because Pepsi would give us a better rate if we did not include them. And so there's other avenues for them to get the beverages at their schools.
Okay. Mrs. McCulloch?
You weren't done, go ahead.
No, I wasn't done. So, do we control the product mix that is in the vending machines?
We have the ability to ask that they put certain things in there, but as their profit-driven company, they like to put things in there themselves, and plus, they meet the demand. But we can request that they put certain things in there, yes.
Okay. I think this is the first time I've seen this come, and then maybe because this is the first time it's been unbundled. You know, when schools first started doing this 20 years ago, or whenever it was, it was pretty controversial. So we're putting high-sugar caffeine products in schools and...
The USDA does regulate certain machines in certain locations, and we follow those rules, and they have the more healthy beverages.
This is not in the cafeteria, or, no?
No, but I do believe the ones in certain places in the schools, and I can double-check. Anything that's regulated by the USDA meets those requirements.
This is for vending machines. That's what this is for. Vending machines.
Correct.
That we make $14,000 on.
Okay.
And it's primarily for staff to get the product out of the vending machines. So that's who are using. These are, they're located different areas, and Mrs. Hully, maybe you can help me out with this, but, I mean, they're primarily made for, primarily for staff and teachers.
That's what Dr. Jarrett told me when I asked that. I asked the same question, and Dr. Jarrett, he said, "It's mostly staff, it's not for students."
Who are providing the vending machines in the cafeterias, or outside of the cafeterias in the commons area?
I will have to look into that specifically. I know some of the high schools do. I do, like I said, anything that falls within the student realm is regulated by the USDA guidelines, to my understanding. So, back, once upon a time, when it was all Pepsi and sugary Mountain Dew, that was one thing, but now the product mix in the machines is a lot healthier. So that is quite a bit different than it was in the past. A lot of those products are made specifically to fit those guidelines, because they're so prevalent with their customers. So they have a lot of products that fit within that.
So these vending machines are primarily in staff areas? Is that what we're saying?
Primarily, but some are out in the other areas. Some are available after school for athletic events and practices and things like that, to my understanding.
The cafeteria, the nutrition services are providing the drinks in the cafeteria, the USDA-approved drinks, which do oddly enough include diet sodas. But that would not be in the cafeterias, my understanding. These ones that would be out in the commons area would include waters or...
Gatorade.
The USDA-approved products for the students.
Okay. Ms. McCulloch?
So, even though this contract is just for the vending machines, and the booster clubs, for example, would get their own for their, like, at the football games, they do not have to buy Pepsi products. Would that be correct? Because in the past, they could buy their own, but it had to be Pepsi products.
That is correct. We won't be, we won't have exclusive rights for anyone in those areas.
Okay. The other thing I would say is, and there's not a contract, so I'm assuming just because of the way it's done with the bid, you don't have to do that, correct? Which is a shame, because when, all those years that I worked with Pepsi, and, I mean, we had a whole lot of expired product, because they dump it on the schools. Sure like to see that we hold them accountable to bringing us stuff that's within the right dates.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, Mr. Connor?
You know what? I will say, I pulled this one, and I didn't realize there was so much interest in it.
There you go.
So, there you go. I thought it was just me.
That's right. Okay, I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 7A, the exclusive pouring right.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, now I'll take a motion and a second for item 8A, which is the Don Johnston Snap and Read subscription.
So moved.
Mr. Connor moves?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mr. Segal?
How useful would this, of a tool, would this be for our general education students? I realize this is primarily being used as an, you know, an assistive technology for those who need a lot more help with reading and writing, but could this be used more in the general education environment?
Yes, it can, and I'll defer over here for an answer, but I want to just share kind of what we've done this year. What we've done this year is connected our special education department with our curriculum department, so that as we're developing our core curriculum, we're including Snap and Read and Co:Writer as a resource on those curriculum maps, so that they're always available for teachers. We also did some targeted training with the curriculum deans to ensure that they understood how the tool was to be used. And then beyond that, we're reaching into the classroom for training purposes, so that we're actually training a teacher in front of her students. So we're embedding it in teaching the kids alongside the teacher. Would you like to add anything to that?
Sure. I'm Gary Culp. I'm the Related Services Program Administrator, so I'm over the AT team. And actually, that's a really good question, because when people think of assistive technology, and primarily, I'd like to say my specialty is that area, I did it previously, they think it's just for students with disabilities, whereas there are students in the general education that can benefit from it. I always compare it to, some people might want to read a traditional book, whereas I might like to listen to an audiobook. So there's different ways that it can be used, and I think that it really helps the general education kids as well.
Okay. Mr. Dixon? I'm sorry, did you have another question?
Just one more comment. I noticed it looked like the heaviest usage was coming out of Co:Writer. Can you explain a little bit more to me what that is?
Sure. Co:Writer is a program specifically that helps more so writing with, when kids want to express themselves but struggle to do so, you can actually use it, whereas you press the button and just talk into it. It also helps do word prediction, so if you're struggling with a word you might want to say, it gives you a list of five options or so. It's a really good program. We've used it for years, and it really helps with written expression and being able to put your thoughts into words more coherently.
We might need that at a board meeting. Mr. Dixon, I think you're next.
Yeah. My question was, how many reading programs do we have currently?
Could you specify, just in terms of reading, like, for assistive technology, for just technology in general?
Technology in general.
I actually don't know that information. My primary focus is on, like, the assistive technology side of things, but I can get that information to you. I can ask the assistive technology team what other kind of resources we have within that.
And the other question was, how available is it? Now, can students take it, be at home on the Internet and pull it up, and then there's special books that are implemented into there? Are there books that they can, how does it work? I would love to. I've seen a demonstration.
No, that's great, and I'm glad you're asking that question, because it's a good question. You actually don't even need Internet access with it. Now, if, usually, primarily, if you're using it, you would be using it on the Internet, because you wanted to read to you and such, but you could use it on a Word document. So basically, what it does, and it works on PDFs as well, is that you can take the text and basically do kind of like a square, whereas it'll read everything to you, and then you can set it at different voice levels, different rate if needed. So, and it kind of lets you then, not just search from there, but resources within Word and other documents. And that's just a brief explanation. I know our assistive technology team does a really good job on giving more.
And you said it's available to all teachers, correct? It's just, they just have to be trained, don't they?
Yeah, that's correct. And primarily, what they've been doing is trying to target teachers, and maybe even like a section of a class, and then for the secondary level, if the teacher has multiple classes, then they're trained, and they can show the other students how to use this.
And the reason why I really focus on this is because I know there are so many students that cannot read, and this is a great helper. And I would love to see it more active. That's absolutely right. So, thank you.
Mrs. McCulloch?
You referred to the assistive technology team. Can you tell me who's on that? I guess I had thought it was disbanded, but it was our autism team that was disbanded.
Yeah, there was four members on it. Sandy Doeman, Jennifer...
And tell me what they are. Are they speech people? Are they teachers? Who's on, what, who was on it, and what are their special?
They're actually, they're actually all teachers. Sandy Doeman, Jennifer Erickson, Holly Croll, and Beth Krupke. So, they have been working closely with Don Johnston on this. Their primary focus then has been, you know, reading growth and doing reading. But, yeah, they are just teachers. They're not SLPs or anything like that.
So the whole piece with assistive technology that the SLPs and others used to do, who's taken that over, since they're not on the team anymore? Because beyond programs for reading, there's other assistive technologies out there.
Yeah, that's still this team. This team helps with acquiring different materials, like switches, different things like that. They have focused on this, but in the future, they're hoping to build the bandwidth so that the teachers can take ownership and be able to show this, while they focus on other areas as well, like getting more communication devices for students who need it.
Yeah, exactly. So, these are full-time teachers, and then what do they pay, a stipend for their work on the team? How does that work?
They're just full-time salaried teachers that work specifically for assistive technology.
So they don't have, they're not in a classroom?
That is right, but we have really focused lately on having them go into our programming for students who really need things first, who are autism or plus classrooms. And then from there, they're also focusing on some, on the resource students as well.
So just so we all understand, how does somebody get referred to the assistive technology team?
The teacher or any staff member, they actually have a form that you can fill out for the referral process, and it goes to them through a Google form. So then they make contact with the teacher, and they're able to go out there and, you know, observe first and then make suggestions from there.
And these are all students with IEP?
Usually.
That are referred?
Usually, but like I said, with certain programs, it can, it can help everybody. And I know with Snap and Read, they've done it with whole classes, and I'm positive that not everybody had an IEP in those classes.
All right. And that was my backdoor into the question, was just to see how somebody who is outside the SPED system would have access, but with a team of four provided for the entire district.
And the team of four is good, because I was in a similar district, and I was a team of one, and that didn't go well.
Well, I just think they have their job ahead of them. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item 8A, the Don Johnston Snap and Read subscription.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay, and I'll take a motion and a second for item 9C, which is the new school construction change order logs.
So moved.
Well, that wasn't pulled. Somebody pulled it.
Anthony said he had the wrong one.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay. All right. We'll move on then to the closed session consent items, the HR organizational report and addendum, and the student discipline, unless otherwise modified below. The board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations. In the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student 4218 is expelled for the remainder of this school year and the entire 2019-20 school year. Students 2038, 4216, and 4217 are expelled for the remainder of this school year. Student 4214 and student 4215 are expelled through the first semester of this 18-19 school year. And the expulsion for student 2037 is held in abeyance contingent upon an EIA agreement for the remainder of this school year. The following students are receiving EIAs: Student 3630, 3631, 3632, 3633, 3634, and Student 3635, as well as Student 3636. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, then I'll have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scavano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Very good. We will move on to our next item, which is the superintendent's report. And Dr. Vosberg is here, sitting in for Dr. Jarrett.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention what you already mentioned tonight. Mr. Scavano is, tomorrow is our seventh year of the Academy Expo. Great event. I want to encourage those that can take advantage of the opportunity to see it, to go see it for yourself. It's really quite a display. We have over 100 business partners there, setting up booths that are very interactive to explore our students to different careers. Our students get an opportunity to practice their soft skills. They get dressed up, they learn to make eye contact and shake hands with business partners. And one thing that I underestimated, but is always a highlight for me, is not only do our students are getting exposure to the business community, but our business community is getting exposure to our students. And they walk away very impressed with our students. So it's always positive and refreshing to hear that many of them, this is their only opportunity to engage with our students, and they, every year, they say, "We really like your kids, and we want to do more to help." And so I think we have, through this event, built some other partnerships to support our students in their career paths. So it's a great event. I think it's one of the things that's unique to our district. And board members, there are opportunities for tours if you haven't signed up yet. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. We'll move on then to our action items, and the first action item tonight is the resolution to approve the 2018 tax levies. This was presented by Mrs. Yar at our last board meeting. Is there a motion and a second?
So approved.
Second.
Moved and second by Mr. Rollins. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
I'll say the obvious. We yet again have a flat levy, and our discussion at the committee of the whole...
of the whole is, at least from my point of view, was that the state has not been exactly the most consistent partner in this. They did come through, and yet, in spite of that, we remain flat. And I think it, it shows a lot for the district that the fiscal consistency has been here. And I believe this is the sixth year, is it?
Seventh.
Seventh year. This will be the seventh. It was six, now seven. So, it's really a fiscal discipline, and I give the administration a lot of credit for really challenging all the departments. So, I think a lot of credit, and I think this will pay dividends for the, for everybody who's probably taxpayers. The rate's going to go down. So, I think the news is good. And as difficult as it is, I would like to say thank you to everybody at RPS, because I know it's not easy on the administrative side to make all this balance. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rollins?
I'd echo Mr. Connor's comments. You know, this is a combination of, we have gotten increased revenue from the state, which is good, but it also requires fiscal discipline from the administration, and the administration has shown the ability to have that fiscal discipline. So, you know, none of this is easy. The easy button is always to increase taxes, and I'm glad that we're not hitting that easy button. I'd also just like to give a shout out to our partners around the community who are doing the same thing. The paper reported today that the city and the library have both done flat levies, approved flat levies. I believe that the county did a flat levy, if I remember correctly. And so, that, that's going to be helpful as well. The other piece of this is that we've gotten some good news on the equalized assessed valuation is starting to creep back up. It's, the number came in a little bit higher than we thought. It's up 4% this year. So, this is with us keeping the levy flat as the value of the property around the district starts to slowly come back. That really should help drive the rate down, and I think that's going to benefit everybody.
Great. Any other comments or...? Thank you. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the 2018 tax levy.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support in that as well. Our second item, the Rockford Systems LLC donation was pulled by administrations. So, move on to the Erickson Institute Early Development Instrument, PDSA that was presented by Mrs. Detman and others last week. I'll take a motion in a second to approve that.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Comments or questions? Mr. Segal?
This was a initiative that I guess I was a little bit skeptical about at first because I just felt like, you know, we're going to be building a plan to address early childhood, or really age zero through third grade. But this is really a really smart use of money, because we can make the greatest strides investing with this age of, of students. And for that reason, I'm definitely in support of the, of the initiative. But I don't want to forget that there's another nine years of school after third grade that we still need to focus as hard as we can on. And not only now, but even for those students who benefit from this, this initiative. It doesn't all end at third grade. It isn't all fixed because these students benefited from the program. We still need to remember that fourth through 12th grade, we still have a lot of work to do.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
We had a lively discussion on this at the committee of the whole. And I know while board meetings are kind of a snooze, and maybe the committee, I know.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, come on. Yeah. Nobody's, nobody's anxiously flipping their dials for this, I would think. But-
It was a time.
Yeah, it was a time, yes. Thankfully, that time is gone. But what I will say about the committee of the whole, the good news is that there was a lot of good and fairly free-wheeling discussion. And there's three points I'd like to bring out that we did talk about. Number one, the total cost of the program is $300,000, $100,000 of which is being given by the Erickson itself, which is good. And one of the things that potentially that covers, for those of you that didn't follow this, this is census tract based, which means that within any geography in the Rockford Public Schools domain, including private schools, and it was also suggested, if possible, homeschooling and others, that there would be an assessment vehicle that would be done across the board. And so, this is, from my point of view, it's a lot of money. And one of the things that we did ask the individuals that were from Alignment Rockford, Transform Rockford, and other organizations about their commitment to this, and they stood up and said they are committed, because we're spending a lot of money on this. And this is all being, this is all being funded, the other $200,000 by the district, even though it's really for the entire community. And we're doing this because we care deeply about the children in this community and their success. And this is hopefully going to be a cornerstone. And there are a couple of questions I know that I personally raised. One was that are we going to, or do we feel confident that we've reached out to all parts of the community? And that includes some of the small, smaller parts of the community, from my point of view, like Cherry Valley, like New Milford, like unincorporated Winnebago County. There's really a lot of territory here, but it also means in the neighborhoods. And one of the things that I got was a clear sense that folks like Alignment Rockford and Transform Rockford really had committed to reach out to the neighborhoods and make sure that everybody was engaged, and that this was a process that would help to be for everybody. And then also, I had questioned how the test would be administered, because obviously, what this depends on is the teacher to assess the students. And to give her a lot of credit, Mrs. Detman went through and gave me an answer that gave me a good comfort level, that the methodology behind this and the standards for the testing were good, and that there were things put into the testing that made sure that it was a good and fair assessment. So, I was pleased with that. We could, in fact, get criticized for spending a lot of money, but I think the one area all of us have agreed, I think, is that early childhood is really the starting point, that we have to intervene to make sure that all children are ready and that they all are supported by something that really both assesses what their needs are, which are many, and that that's addressed. So, in a sense, I have to say I'm proud of us for really taking on that criticism and doing this anyway as something that's a community service.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins?
So, just to clarify, my understanding of what this is, is that we're going to use the schools to do an assessment of children, and not just the public schools, but some of this will be done in the private schools. But then that assessment, the concept anyway, is the assessment data, the assessment information will then be used by the community to look at areas of need and create strategies or tactics to address those areas of need in ways that hopefully will create an impact within the schools, which is why we're, we're doing this. This actually fits within something that I've been talking to people in the community about for a long time, which is that you can't expect the schools to fix everything. There's a lot of other things going out on in kids' lives, and if they want to see ultimately a real impact in the schools, they have to start addressing some of those other issues. So, I should be wholly in favor of this. I'm way more ambivalent than I thought I would be, simply because I do see a real risk that this is just going to be another study that sits on a shelf and gathers dust. And we did have some involved community members here at the committee of the whole. I know them all. I respect them all. But I do think that there's a real risk that that's exactly what's going to happen. And I will vote for it, but I was hoping those people would be here, because I wanted to look them in the eyes and say, "I'm counting on you to make sure that doesn't happen. All I've got here are the administration who advocated for this. This is $200,000." When I talk about opportunity cost, you know, the things I think about, this is, this is two and a half instructional coaches for the year. You know, this is two and a half counselors or social workers. So, where's the bigger impact for us? Is the bigger impact to spend the money on this if it's just a study that sits on a shelf and nothing ever comes of it that's going to create an impact in kids' lives? So, I have no way of knowing, you know, what the end result is going to be. We do, and somebody might have been Mr. Escobado made an allusion to it at the committee of the whole, we have a history in this community of doing studies that sit on shelves and gather dust. I, I, the other thing I'll tell you that didn't give me a great deal of comfort, I asked the question, "Can you give me an example in another community of how this data was used to create a program that created an impact?" And the answer was, the phrase I used afterwards with somebody was pretty squishy. So, I will vote for this, but I, if I'm up here in two years and I ask the question, "What was done with this $200,000?", I hope somebody can give me an answer that's not squishy.
I would just say, you know, I'm in full support of this. Well, I'm actually very excited about it. But I think, I think we have, we're due some accountability with this, you know, that because, I mean, I want to hear down the road that we, we, meaning that Transform and Alignment and, and all, you know, the social workers of Rockford and all that, all that kind of, that action was taken and tactics were implemented, and that we know that they're working, and that we ought, we ought to hear the, the impact of that, you know, because we're, we're the one that has all the skin in the game here. So, any other comments? Any follow-up from Mrs. Detman? Okay. Okay, thank you. I'll have the coordinator call the role then on the approval of the Erickson Institute Early Development Instrument.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Our next action item is the approval of the STAR Autism Support Program that Brett Vosberg presented last meeting. Can I have a motion for that to be approved?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? Mrs. McCullough?
I'm just going to reiterate my concern that this doesn't stay solely with the information, solely with the self-contained classrooms. There's a whole lot of teachers that have, you know, autistic students in their regular ed classrooms who could really utilize this support and information. So, I'm hoping that there's a way that you're going to disseminate it, and that you have a plan to do so, in fact.
Yeah. There's a general education overview program that the STAR staff will come out and hold a session for general education teachers with students in their classrooms, and then follow up with a series of webinars along with the overview of training.
So, it's very general. Is there a way that a teacher who has a student in their classroom and needs some specific help is able to access a human to come help them?
Yeah. They would contact me.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll ask for the coordinator to call the role on the approval of this item.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Our next action item is the approval of School Works Charter Authorization Development and Support that Dr. Jarrett presented last meeting. Is there a motion to approve this? Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Connor?
I will say on this one, we asked a lot of questions about this, but in the end, I think, those of you that don't follow this, the idea is that both the standards as we go through, and my most unfavorable term, a rubric for a success-
Okay.
-have been proposed. And this is an organization that has successfully, looking at the assessment of charter schools. And I think it was clear that we needed both a better process and the standards. And I think that this, the School Works relationship will do that. And so, I think it was a really good idea, and that we look forward to applying it, because we have two charters that are immediate and one is for next year. So, this is a good framework.
Thank you. Any other comments? Now, I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of the School Works Charter Authorization Development and Support.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Our next items are the approval of the board policies that Mrs. Simpkins presented to us at our last meeting. All right, if we do these all together? All right.
Yes.
I will have to take a motion then for that.
So moved.
Second by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion on any of the policies? Okay. I'll have the coordinator then call the role on the approval of these policies, 4.30, 5.120, 5.19, 6.150, 7.50, 7.6, 7.100, and policy 7185.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirvano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses, one absent.
Okay. We are now on to new business, and I think both items are Dr. Vosberg presentations.
Okay. Actually, Mr. Connor might want to speak to the first one. It is his class from East High School. Did you want to comment, Mr. Connor?
My comments are not printable.
I'm sorry. I stole that joke from somebody else.
You stole that joke from me.
Okay. But it was good. I thought it'd be a good usage twice. So, that's a donation from the class of 1953 from East High School. They're closing out their account and donating the money to the school for the Fine Arts Department.
Wonderful. And the amount is?
Yeah, about $2,000.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions for Dr. Vosberg?
I'm going to be an imposter saying this because I didn't go there but once in ERAB.
All right. There you go. Okay.
Always an ERAB. Come on.
There you go.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Second item?
All right. Yep.
All right. Second item is a contract with IESA, the Illinois Association of School Administrators. And this is a one person, one representative from the organization, Dr. Volz. His contract is only $4,000. So typically, that would not be an individual item on the agenda, but it does trigger us over $10,000 for the year with this organization. His training is around teacher evaluation. We use him twice during the year. At the beginning of the year, we use him to train all new administrators and returning administrators that want a refresher on using the Danielson model and collecting evidence and reflective conferencing around teacher evaluation. And then later in the year, he'll actually come to the school district, and he'll be here for two days in November. And he'll, what we do is we go in about groups of four, and he'll go into classrooms with three or four administrators. They watch, watch a teacher teach, take notes, and then they go out in the hallway or into a small conference room and debrief on, on the evidence they collected and what you would do with that evidence in a post-conference with the teacher. So, this is probably the third or fourth year we've done that. It's been very helpful for our administrators. He's, he's one of the best in the state at this work, and there's always a demand for him to come back.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Vosberg? Both these items will be presented- Both these items will be presented at our next.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Segal.
So, for the, so for the $4,000, we're going to have two, when I was reading, we're going to have two training classes, what, eight hours apiece? And is that with?
He'll be here for two full days. And what we'll do is we'll probably visit four, probably three or four schools, and he'll train approximately in those two days, he'll probably train about 20 administrators. And they're going to go in and do observations together over those two days.
So, he trains the new ones, and then he trains the other ones?
So, it's required for the new ones, and then we'll have open, open spots, anybody that wants to take a refresher. Almost everybody's had it already in the district, but they always learn something new, so they'll want to join it.
Okay. Both these items will be presented for approval on our November 13th board meeting. So, our next meeting is a committee of the whole on the 6th, I believe, of November, and that will mostly be academic results discussion, I believe, is the topic, right? Okay, so be ready for that one. So, if there are no other comments or agenda items, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Segal. All those in favor say aye. Pose the same sign. We are adjourned at 7:57.